Call a roll, please.
Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ernie, do you and your group want to make that?
Stay the hell away from me.
How you doing, boys? Whereas National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its 10th anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn and preparing a pathway to good, quality jobs and well-paying careers in Sioux City and across the nation. Whereas Sioux City recognizes the role of the regional apprenticeship and affiliated labor organizations and employers in expanding opportunities in our workforce that are inclusive of individuals who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, thus providing a path for those qualified individuals, including women, youth, people of color, veterans, rural communities, and justice-involved individuals to become apprentices and to contribute to the American industries. And now, therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 17th to the 24th, 2024, as National Apprenticeship Week in Sioux City. I'd like to present this to you guys and have you say a few words, if you would like to give your own, but the county's thing.
Thank you. Do I need to say my name and address?
No.
All good, buddy.
Thank you very much for this. This means a lot to us. I was looking at our charter today, and the charter says November 29th, 1901, which means the Carpenters Union has been in Sioux City for 123 years. And we're just here to carry on the tradition. There's not a better feeling in the world than to have a struggling person come in looking for a career or a job, and he finds out that it's a viable career with really good benefits, and he can provide for his family. We're getting kids straight out of high school. I was just mentioning, I've got 18-year-olds, and I have a 55-year-old in our apprenticeship right now. We're up to around 50 apprentices, and that has a lot to do with the economic development that's going on in the area. And we hope that continues so we can continue to put our guys to work. Does anyone say anything?
All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Interview for the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, Karina Pedroza. Please come up to the microphone and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Hello, everyone. My name is Karina Pedroza. I am the Entrepreneurial Community Navigator for Iowa's West Coast Initiative. Before that, I had 10 years in higher education. Most of it was spent working at Western Iowa Tech Community College. I also worked at Bear Cliff a little bit. So I'm interested in being a part of the Inclusive Committee because I have dedicated most of my adult life to serving the community, and especially the Latino and Hispanic community through various different ways. I was the president of the Board for Unity in Action. It's a nonprofit organization out of South Sioux City, Nebraska, that aims to advocate for the Latino community. And I know that Siouxland has a lot of potential, and there's a lot of things that really need a voice. The community needs a voice and an advocate. And that's really my main purpose, is to serve as an advocate for the Latino community and just helping help them gain access to resources. Right now, in my role through, you know, their entrepreneurial endeavors, so gain access to economic development resources, things like that, before it was through education. But again, there's so much potential in Siouxland that it really is just my passion to be a voice for them and to be a part of that community and help them gain access to whatever it is that they need to succeed and be productive members of the Siouxland community.
You know, I think that you're an excellent applicant. Your resume, I'm glad you spent the time on it that you did, on the application, because it's very impressive.
Thank you.
And you have done a lot of things, and you've accomplished a lot of things. And I know that Inclusive Sioux City could really use a person like you on the committee and keep things moving forward.
Thank you so much.
Very positive. You're welcome.
Do we have an opening for?
We do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks so much.
Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda, which is items 3 through 15D. Consider those items passionately unless a separate roll call vote passed for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read that item, if you want to speak on it. All speakers shall state their name for the record. You don't have to do your address. We found out that's not legal, even though I've been saying it for the last six months. So now you just have to state your name. So sorry about the... I should read the agenda closer. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
3 is a reading of the October 21st City Council minutes. 4 is a resolution approving the self-help insurance reserve fund policy and rescinding Resolution 2023-0500. 5 is a resolution temporarily closing various downtown streets on November 25th with a holiday-lighted parade. Sign me up. Just be down there at the bus depot. We'll get you on. 6 is a resolution amending the Parks and Rec Department authorized payroll complement by adding a part-time attendant and specialist at the Long Limes Family Recreation Center. 7, our items 7A to C are motions approving annual reports, the Events Facility and Tourism Advisory Board, the Gillian Kosovo City Sister City Committee, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. 8 are actions relating to grants and donations. A is a resolution accepting a donation from the Friends of the Sioux City Public Library for summer reading and other projects. B is a resolution authorizing the Engineering Division to apply to the Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management Levy Improvement Program for the Big Sioux River Levy Expansion Project.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Brittany, if I may, on this very important grant application. Thank you for working on it, Brittany.
Yeah.
I asked the question, and I think you did answer it for me, but I just want to be clear, that on some of the numbers that you had in our homework, for example, the design, the FY26, $550,000, that's a budgeted amount, or that's a suggested amount by... I'm comparing the $550,000 to the design for the project cost, it was actually $530,000. And then on the construction, FY28, it shows $2 million, but for our project application, it's $1,200,000. Could you just go over that again for me? You did send me an email. It made sense, but I just want to make sure that I'm really clear on this.
Brittany Anderson, Senior Civil Engineer. So the CIP budget was put in with estimates just through our engineering department. The grant application cost amounts were prepared by SEH, who helped us kind of narrow down that scope. There are a number of items that can't be included in the grant. The property acquisition, relocation, demolition, our engineering staff time aren't included in there, and like, property acquisition consultant, none of that is included. So those additional funds are accounted for in the CIP.
Okay. So the grant application, the 50%, that's calculated at the $865,000 amount based on the $530,000 design and the $1,200,000 construction?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. And then we're on our own, city more or less, we're on our own with property acquisition?
Correct.
That will be required during this project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there... But sometimes in the past, at least on Perry Creek, FEMA came through and helped with property acquisitions, I think. Is that not possible if you apply with this grant?
The one FEMA grant that I do know of, they cover property acquisition, but you can't make improvements on those properties, and they consider building a levy on those improvements on the property.
Okay, thank you. C1 is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for two light-duty buses. C2 is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for supplemental shortfall funding for one light-duty bus and one heavy-duty bus. D is a resolution approving an application to the EPA Environmental and Climate Justice Community Change Grant Program to address climate change, climate and pollution reduction strategies, improve storm water management, and enhance indoor air quality. E is a resolution approving a community partner agreement with the Housing Trust Fund to apply for the EPA Environmental and Climate Justice Community Change Grant Program.
Mayor, I'm going to ask Renee to come up and, Jill, talk about this just for a moment. I'm on the trust fund board anyway, so I know what's going on, but can we just get some clarification in what neighborhood are we talking about? What property are we talking about? What's our vision?
Sure. Renee Billings, Economic Development Manager. So we've been working with the federal EPA for several years, and we received a grant through them to do a site assessment and revision plan for 2101 Court Street, which is the current home of the Boys and Girls Home.
Former St. Joe's Hospital.
Former St. Joe's Hospital.
14-plus acres.
Yes, correct. So we have a plan that turns the property into affordable housing. It redevelops the newest portion of the St. Joe Hospital into about 119 affordable housing units, and then adds some row houses and townhomes to the remainder of the property, along with abundant green space and trails for the area. So this grant will allow us to... We're applying for just over $19 million to help with some of the remediation, including like asbestos and lead paint remediation on-site, as well as implementing green building practices and on-site detention using green infrastructure.
And demolition?
Demolition is not covered under...
Oh, okay.
But we do have some CIP funding that we programmed for the up...
Mm-hmm.
That could assist with that.
Mm-hmm. Well, you know I'm a fan of putting that neighborhood back to a neighborhood. It's going to be a long haul, but this is a great step in the right direction. I'm so glad that we're making progress. I don't think anybody thought that we'd be able to find any sizable grant. Just cross your fingers that we get awarded. And again, now, this grant is a zero match, but we don't know what that's going to look like next year if we have to reapply. Is that right? Or do we already know that we will have to match?
Currently, there is no match for this grant, and we don't know if the program will be around next year, I think.
Right, right. Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to it.
Yep.
Thank you, ladies.
9 are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Cone Park Destination Patio Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the sidewalk ramp project. 10 are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a sub-participating addendum with the AT&amp;T for employees required to have devices. B is a resolution approving a motor vehicle lease agreement with the Siouxland District Health Department for the use of one Chevrolet Malibu. C is a resolution approving a statement of work agreement with Pro Circular for two network risk assessments and three annual penetration tests. D is a resolution approving a First Amendment to the Funding Agreement with West Middle for 11 units of housing at 1,200 West 5th Street and 1,211 West 5th Street. E is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with HDR Engineering to complete the Protech grant application for the Bacon Creek Conduit Reconstruction Project. F is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to on-duty health for the on-site physicals for police and fire employees. G is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Thompson Solutions for the Tyson Event Center Variable Frequency Drive Project. I need to abstain conflict of interest. H is a resolution approving a contract to Triple D Contracting for the demolition of 1110 27th Street. I is a resolution approving a contract to Mark Al Venetius for the West 3rd Street and Kansas Street Storm Sewer Repair Project. J is a resolution approving a contract to West Central Construction for the Floyd Boulevard Guard Rail Replacement Project. K is a resolution approving a contract to Heber Construction for the demolition of 519 and 521 11th Street contingent upon the approval of a performance and payment bond. What building is that, Darrell? I'm trying to remember. Is that that apartment house?
Argonaut apartment.
Argonaut.
Okay, I'll take that off my list. Thank you, there's others I have. But 11 are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Bainbridge Construction for the Highway 75 Water Main Replacement Project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Mark Al Venetius for the Downtown Quiet Zone Improvement Project. C is a resolution authorizing payment to the American Arbitration Association for Arbitration Deposits. D is a resolution authorizing partial settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment thereof. 12 are purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Highway Truck Equipment for two spare plows. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Kinefler Chevrolet for one Chevrolet Traverse to be used by the Siouxland District Health. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Municipal Supply for meter parts. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to American Underground Supply for fire hydrants for the utility field headquarters. E is a resolution approving a purchase order to Midwest Public Safety for in-car cameras and body-worn camera video storage. F is a resolution awarding a purchase order to NetS Plus for laptops and monitors for the county replacement project. G is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Riverside Technology for laptop accessories for the county replacement project. 13 are applications for beer, cigarette, I mean for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, vapor permits. 14 is applications for beer and liquor license, and 15, board commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes 5-016 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Art Center HVAC Replacement Project, Phase 1. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-017 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Floyd Riverfront and Plywood Trail Connection Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-018 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Zenith Water Treatment Plant New Riverfront Well Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Brad, we just did one of these a year ago, right?
Brad Pitts, Utilities Director. Yeah, that was the Well Number 2 Replacement Project. That one hasn't been online that long, so it was just a couple months ago. We put that in service.
Subcervical did one.
Yep, that was the Well Number 2 Replacement Project.
Okay. I just, I wonder why we're... How many more of these do we have to go?
This is the new one. We're looking for new well sites because we have some of these wells that were commissioned in the 1970s that are nearing their life expectancy. We're trying to find new locations for wells because, based on new regulation, we can't place wells back in those same locations due to separation distances. So we're just kind of planning for the future here as we go, knowing that some of these wells, we won't be able to re-drill in the same location.
We ever acidize them?
Yeah. We... I would say, you know, we keep tabs on the flows out of the wells, and when we start to see production decline, we bring a contractor in to acidize them and rehab them.
Stretch the life out of them.
Trying to do... Well, they've been there for a while.
Yeah, they've been there a long time, so I'm glad that you're being proactive in trying to get in front of it and finding new sources for us. Is it going to be along that same area?
Yeah, this well will be right next to the Welcome... Well, behind the Welcome Center boat, near the Interpretive Center. They identified two locations for wells in that area. Welcome.
Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-019 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Nebraska Street Water Main Replacement Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-020 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the South Mulberry Street Improvement Project. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Hearing is closed. Passes 5-021 is a hearing and resolution approving the proposal to grant a temporary easement of the property at budding 810 South Cecilia Street. Petitioner's Tom Neswick. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-022 is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Moose Building for Properties at 4001 Glen Avenue, 2500 South St. Oban Street, and 423 to 25 South Ruston Street and authorizing the building agreement. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard?
Jill, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. You don't have to worry about coming up necessarily. I just wanted to say, first and foremost, I think these are great projects. I've always been in supportive of these, trying to get more affordable housing options and doing everything that we can to increase our stock. I would just say, the two things, I've mentioned them to you in the past, but I would just really urge you to work with the developer and think about it in the future, to do anything, almost like cost engineering of working with them, to see what we could do to better utilize the land and the space that we have available, whether it's setbacks or whether it's just different building materials, whatever we can do to lower that entry point cost, because after all, the spirit of this is to get some more affordable houses. And while these will be brand-new builds, $300,000 as a cap certainly seems out of reach for a number of people. And so I think anything that we can do to urge the developer not only to get creative and think of how we could lower that down, but still offer a great product, I think that would be great. The second thing that I just wanted to reiterate, and again, I hate to belabor the point, but I just always think it's worth mentioning when we're doing some of these projects, is thinking about zero entry and what we can do to make sure that as much living as possible is on that one main floor. I think that we all, at various stages in our lives, might have things that happen that would make it a little easier to just have things on one floor. So I understand that when you're dealing with a smaller square foot, you're not going to have necessarily the ability to do that completely, but I would just work with the developer, hopefully urge that to happen, and hopefully we can have a product that we're all proud of. So thank you.
Hearing is closed. Passes 5-023 is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Jamie Gable for the lease of property at 2503 Discovery Boulevard, Unit Number 4, in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-024 is a resolution approving a master services and purchasing agreement with Exxon for equipment for the Police Department Equipment Replacement Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Chief, you have something? Just want to get this pass so you have a nice birthday week, chief.
That would be a great birthday present.
Okay.
Chief, I did just want to mention, you know, I appreciated the memo. I thought it was thorough and the explanation about why we're going this direction and kind of why we feel, as a department, this is going to be a good, beneficial move. I just wanted to commend your team on at least being able to research this, and I understand the costs can sometimes, at times, seem, you know, cost prohibitive, or gosh, you know, we want to make sure that we are getting a good value for what we're doing, and while this may seem like an expensive endeavor, we're actually seeing how it's really saving a lot of security, not only for our citizens, but also our personnel and our officers out on the street. So I just appreciate you and your team doing some thoughtful research and doing the best we can to not only do what's best for our officers, but it sounds like work with other departments, hopefully a little more seamlessly as well.
Very much so. Credit to Captain Kellen and her team. It was a multidisciplinary team, and they looked at...
Well, I didn't want to give her all the credit, but yeah, I mean...
No, and her team, so...
There you go.
They did a very good job of looking at everything, functionality, cost, et cetera. So I think they arrived at a positive vendor for us that'll see us through the future because I think the discussion point has been that whatever company we go with, we're stuck with them for quite a while, and I think this technology integrates with what we already have. So everybody did a very good job arriving at this, and it was not clear right up until the very end which vendor we'd go with.
But then you talked to Chief Stallman from Ankeny, who's, I'm sure, threw it over the top for you, with his vast experience in the...
No, it was just, it was very useful to find other agencies that operated with it, and then not to mention the fact that these cameras worked very well with the operating system, with the RMS that we just invested in. So should integrate very well, should be good for the department, good for the officers.
Question I had for you, chief, is you mentioned it briefly, the future. What is the future of this purchase and going forward? What's the, like, the life of it, and what...
Well, a number of things. Right now, some... Part of it is just the replacement and how they function it. As they... We keep reserves, and as they go out of service, they have replacement parts for us right away, but some of the future is in the technology, some AI technology to help officers write their reports, LPR functionality within them, so that those cameras are passively looking for potential wanted parties, things that the officers don't see. Really, Exxon, or the preferred vendor here, is basically setting pace for every other company with the functionality that they're building into it. And so we really only have a hint of how good these are going to be and how much they're going to make our lives easier.
Glad to hear it. Thank you.
You bet.
I was just waiting on Councilman Shaner. She's voted now.
Passes 5-0 Citizen Concerns. Are there any citizens that would like to be heard? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll go to council concerns.
Chris Mattson, Senior Planner. We just want to take a quick moment to introduce Gabriel Forjor to you. He joins us from the University of Iowa and started on Monday of last week.
Thank you, Chris. So I'm Gabriel Forjor, and I had my master's in urban and regional planning with a concentration on land use, environmental transportation planning from the School of Planning and Public Affairs in the University of Iowa. So after my master's degree, I started working with the Iowa DOT as a system impact planner, and the focus was on the resiliency and the sustainability of the transportation system of the state. And I also had the opportunity to come to Sioux City to work as a city planner, which I'm very happy to be able to contribute to the sustainable development of Sioux City. like sustainable development of the city, of Sioux City. Thank you very much. And I'm a soccer fan. I love watching English Premier League and I'm a Manchester United fan. My team is in good shape now, but I'm hoping that we get strong and start winning games. Thank you.
No doubt.
Thank you for joining our team. Welcome.
Welcome to the community.
Good luck.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, Matthew. All right, so it's been a while since we've had a meeting. Before we left for Japan, Sioux City was recognized as a bird friendly Iowa designation. We are the only city in the western half of Iowa that has that designation. So that's pretty amazing.
What is it?
We are a bird friendly Iowa.
Oh.
And, uh, we've got a couple of signs that we're, that are going to go up. I believe there, there's a flag up at the Expo Center now. But big news for us. Um, and you know, we pushed a lot of those initiatives, especially with Parks and Rec, um, developing our green spaces. So it's nice to see that pay off because, um, I'm personally proud of our parks and I think we do a lot with our, our green spaces around here. Alex, Julie and I were all in Yamanashi, um, in Japan this past week. Um, and I just want to extend a sincere thank you to them for hosting us. Um, we learned a lot about not just the Japanese culture, but I think we learned a lot about initiatives that they have in Yamanashi City. Um, and, and a lot of different initiatives that, um, we all felt we could incorporate here. Um, and a lot of opportunities to strengthen our ties with them. So that was a, a very, um, eye opening experience for a lot of us. He is not in the room, but I wanted to also offer a thank you to, uh, Mr. Steven Pastolka, who took on the, the leadership role of, um, the Yamanashi Sister City Committee here in Sioux City and went with us, spoke great Japanese, um, was, was a great.
He speak Japanese?
Uh, he, he knows a little. He's, he's pretty good.
Good for him.
He's pretty handy. Um, and is very knowledgeable of a lot of the customs. So he was, he was a huge help. Um, and he just had a great attitude the whole time. I think he kept a lot of us going, especially as we're adjusting to that jet lag. So, um, Halloween, a special thank you go out to the Sioux City Police Department. They are always out there, of course, but on Halloween it is, is so heartfelt. It's, it's such a great experience to see the officers going around and talking with the kids and helping make their nights special and memorable. Um, and you really see that community policing aspect come out. There was an individual that was driving down the street with their lights out and officer, you know, kind of shouted, hey, turn on your headlights. And they're like, oh, sorry, and, and see you there. So it's nice to see, um, officers out and having those good, good interactions because I think that's probably most kids' favorite night of the year. And it's, it's great to add that positivity to it as well. Uh, the last thing is please remember to go out and vote. Tomorrow polls are open from eight to eight. Is that right? Or nine to eight? I took my mom yesterday to vote. To speak to your point, Alex, about zero entry, you never realize how difficult it is to get around what I consider to be a fairly flat house, my mom's house, until you're trying to get a wheelchair down two simple stairs. But they, they had a wheelchair accessible booth set up down, um, at the Long Lines Family Rec Center. That was nice to see and it was busy. So I'm glad to see the amount of people turning out to vote that I did. And that's everything I have for this week.
Julie?
I just want to remind everyone that we continue to work on push forward for affordable and approachable housing in our community. This, we've had several items on the agenda today. The one, uh, over on Fifth Street was our Isabella Court Development with Eleven. Those are actual HUD housing. So you'll be able to get down payment assistance on those, uh, to help them be more affordable for you and your family. Uh, we, we don't know exactly what our development will look like up on Court Street, where the old Saint Joseph Hospital and the now Boys and Home, Girls Home and Family Services is. But it's fourteen and a half acres that the plan is to make it affordable, make it approachable, and make it so that it returns to a neighborhood feeling. We, we want to have like a little village culture in there with the green space and walkability. So please look forward to more updates on that process. We've got to wait until we hear back from this grant, but that should be in the next like 90 days. So I'm really looking forward to this project. I enjoyed Yamanashi City as well. Um, we learned a lot about, I think, the community banding together, but they do it so quietly and so automatically, it seems like. Was very neat and tidy and really no litter. And I think that's because they own the litter. If they see it, it belongs to them. And I've said that before when I preach a little bit about picking up litter around the community. If you see it, it started out as someone else's, but it's now yours. And that's kind of how I always treat it when I see it. If I can grab it, I do. So I was very impressed by that. They have some traveling medical program that they've just started to get shut-ins and underprivileged. It's kind of a mobile medical unit. And I think Alex was very impressed by that as I was, got to sample it out. I'll let him talk a little bit more about that. But it was a great trip and we did learn a lot. So I, I look forward to going back someday.
Alex?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor some of the points that have already been made by my counterparts, but I would just say that, um, it was a real eye opening experience to be able to travel. And what I appreciated more than anything was just the notion that we might be on other sides of the globe. But we very much so have similar strengths as well as challenges before us. There are a number of different initiatives that they're working on, that they're looking at implementing and addressing. And I definitely saw some of those ringing true here in Sioux City as well. And so I loved their nod to agriculture and their utilization of, um, empty buildings and how they're reviving them and bringing new businesses to them or thinking about their population and how they're able to meet the, the healthcare needs that they have in order to, um, promote and create such a quality of life that they can actually attract and retain more people and build up future generations, um, of people that call Yamanashi City home. So I really, I really, um, appreciated the opportunity to go over there and learn from those individuals. I know they've been great stewards, um, of coming over here regularly. And it's been quite some time since Sioux City has been represented. And so, um, I, I'm glad that we, we took that step to solidify that relationship. I would echo the comments that, uh, Matthew brought up about the importance of voting. Uh, make sure that you know where your polling location is and that you can get out to the polls. Um, if you need assistance, you have any questions or you have concerns, there are usually plenty of poll watchers that are there that are able to assist you. Um, if all else fails, I would recommend calling the county auditor. Pat does a great job and him or anyone on his team should be able to answer those questions. Matthew, one of the things that I realized last year or the year before that I didn't even know was just even the different ways that people with disabilities can cast their ballot. Um, you know, if you're not able, if you weren't able to vote early, if you're not able to get out of your vehicle or things, um, you can actually call ahead and have a poll worker bring your ballot out to you to be able to cast your ballot from your car. Um, and so it's one of those where there are a lot of different options. We need to make sure that we're reiterating those to people so that we can break down those barriers and make sure that people's voices are heard. So I look forward to a impressive turnout, um, for Election Day. And I, I'm sure we've had a number of people already turn in some early ballots. And so I'm looking forward to that. Again, I would just reiterate patience. All of us have been in those moments where you're down at the courthouse watching results come in and you want everything to be definitive and you want everything to be crystal clear. And sometimes that's challenging. Um, it seems that elections get tighter and tighter. And in an effort to, um, make sure that things are accurately, um, delivered, that we make sure that we take the time to at least analyze that and do so. So please be patient and understand that everyone is doing their best and everyone is working as hard as they can to make sure that the results are accurate and, um, reported correctly. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, a few things. A week from today, November 11th, is Veterans Day. Um, at 11 o'clock in the morning, typically 11:11, at 11 o'clock in the morning, they have a ceremony honoring our military personnel and remembering our military, um, personnel at the courthouse. Um, I haven't seen anything on that yet, but I also know that in the past, the mayor and the city council members have been invited to a junior ROTC ceremony. So if you could keep your calendars open on Monday, November 11th for those activities, since we don't have a council meeting. I think the junior ROTC typically will have something late afternoon. And so Gabby was looking into that. She said typically we've had our invitations extended by now, but, uh, it's still a week off. So if you could just keep your calendars open for that day. It's a very important day to recognize and to honor. I want to thank the mayor for the proclamation of National Apprenticeship Week. And the reason why I bring that up is the numbers of apprentices that we have in our community, it's, it's very valuable. It's very important. I know, I know, uh, Arnie gave us a, a range of 18 to, to higher, but really the youth of this community are looking for jobs, higher education, not necessarily applies to everybody. It's not one size fits all. And I'm really pleased that they have the apprenticeship program, um, for our youth because our youth are extremely important to the success and, and thriving of a community. Lastly, I just want to thank Mike Colette, who has been extremely helpful, working together, the two of us, on trying to find some solutions, options that we can propose to the mayor and the city council on transportation needs for the law enforcement center. And I think you, did you get that memo sent out to the council members last week? So you have that to study and to look at, but we're going to continue to, uh, come up with some ideas that we can present to the council and the mayor. And, uh, hopefully you'll give it some, uh, attention and, and we can find some solutions. Uh, there have been some, uh, issues already with that, but I think, uh, our Sioux City Police Department's been handling those, I, I hope. So, um, anyway, well, thank you, Mike, for all your hard work on this. You've spent a lot of time on it and you're doing a great job for us. So thank you for that. Uh, that's all I have, Mayor. Oh, one, one other thing, the strategic plan update we received for spring, summer 2024. The, the update, well, that just came out last week, didn't it? Or did I miss something that's maybe a year old?
No, it's just that they pay this money and then the maps aren't right. And this is like the third comprehensive plan that we spent about $300,000 on. And we don't have a finished product yet, but I.
But go on with your story.
Glad to go on with your story, Dan.
Well, I'm glad I brought that one up. Something was telling me just leave this one alone. So with that, thank you all for being here today. Dan, welcome to planning and zoning. You're going to learn a lot from these folks.
As I did for. That's your first project. Get, finally get a comprehensive plan done.
Comprehensive plan. All right, that's all I have, Mayor.
Matthew, I'm glad that you enjoy Halloween because you remember I'm the guy that canceled it.
Oh, I remember.
People 30 years later still remember.
I saw that.
My kids get traumatized on Facebook annually. It's unfortunate that we can't let that one go, but anyway.
Well, I fact checked that and you've saved a lot of lives that year.
Yeah, well.
I'm telling you, you saved a lot of lives.
It wasn't canceled, it was postponed.
Anyway, one thing I want to get, and your weekly update's fine, but the problem is that these type of things get buried. I, I want a every two week update on the KCAU building, where we're at, 19th and Pierce, where we're at, 12th and Nebraska, where we're at, or 11th and Nebraska. And these White Oak, whatever they are, convenience stores that are on Morningside Avenue, Gordon Drive, and 28th and Court.
Yep.
Are a detriment to any neighborhood. I don't care if you can tell me, I can be sued for this because I'm not, you can't sue for telling the truth. There's no reason that we aren't doing something about these. They, they drag a neighborhood down. They're, they're pockets for graffiti and we all know when you let graffiti go unnoticed, it causes problems in the neighborhood. And these guys either get those stores open again or get them torn down. Because it's ridiculous that a, a nice neighborhood has to put up with that nonsense because of irresponsible out of town owners. And I'll get off my soapbox, but I would like a memo every couple of weeks to see what we're doing. And you can add buildings to it as you see them, but those come to mind right away. So I move, we adjourn.
Second.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Chainer.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.